Starting to look a lot like Christmas, right?
Good question.
Would you like?
Yes.
All right, you never know. So first, first on our agenda is to recognize outgoing Family and Children First Council Board President Carrie Woody and and recognize incoming President Jeanette Curtis. Is Carrie here?
Here in the.
Oh, yeah, okay.
She's hiding.
Hiding. Would you like to introduce? Say a few words?
Say that it was a great year and I had a really good time working with three great commissioners, made it really wonderful, and the ministry here at OU did a great job. It's amazing what can change in a year. I think we're in really good hands now with our director, Tony, and I think she's doing an amazing job. And I think that Mark's gonna have anything better here than I did. You know, this is Jeanette Curtis, and I think that she's gonna do an outstanding job.
So if you wouldn't mind, including Tiffany, would you mind coming down? We have photo ops.
Wasn't part of the deal, I mean, sorry.
That's my tea. We have an additional item you can hang on your wall.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Will that stop them? Jeanette, please.
Well, you're part of this now, too.
You can't hide from her.
We're getting it.
I'm gonna be real close to you out of the side here at the last minute. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Carrie Woody is now going to be the Flagster City.
Service safety guard.
Yeah, so congratulations on the move, yeah.
Thank you. I look forward to work.
So if I see anything going on in the city lights, just call Carrie.
Oh, sure. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. And thank you, Jeanette. I promised them they could be in and out real quick because they both did have other things going on.
Also today, we have the folks here from JFS. Everybody from JFS, raise your hands. So all right, well, listen, who's working? Listen, I appreciate you folks being here and joining us today. And we also, you know, the work you do at JFS is terrific. And we appreciate everything you do. So moving on from that, we'd like to move into public comment. So yeah, but introduction of a new employee. Just read. So.
Sienna, she, this is technically her third week. I'll let her hear a little bit, but she joined the HR team.
You like to say a few words?
Yeah, my name is Sienna. So yeah, I'm working on my third week being here, but I do come from an HR background as well. But I'm very happy to be here. We actually been working with this amazing team so far. So look forward to it. So I came from a company out of Groveport, CWY. So I was an HR manager, Department of One, they originally.
Well, we're certainly happy to have you here and welcome to the team.
Thank you so much.
And a Fairfield County grad, too, right?
What's that?
You graduated from one of the county schools in Fairfield?
Yes, yes, from OU.
Now, now I'm in the correct lane, so. You getting there?
I'm getting there.
You know, the fun thing about having somebody next to you is great. Thank you, Jeff.
Here I am.
I'm slave. I understand you have some good news, is that correct?
Oh, yeah, I stopped by today to share the fact that we just recently completed our Department of Rehabilitation and Correction Bureau of Adult Detention Inspection through the Fairfield County Justice Center. And I'm pleased to report that we've received 100% compliance. The eight member inspection teams spent the day, which is about the shortest time that they've ever done this type of inspection. Typically, it runs about two or three days at times. But this, this 179 standards that they pulled from the Higher Revising Code, Section 5120, which dictates how jails are fee run. And we met all those requests, demands, and reviews of all the processes and things that we do at the jail. And those are just the minimum standards, but we're at shoulders above even the minimum standards. So this is the sixth year consecutively, I think, we've gotten 100% compliance.
And that meant you actually got 110%.
Well, I'd like to think of it that way. But, you know, all the, all the responsibility for this falls on the staff and the members that were currently in the jail. They do a really good job and they work hard to make sure that we meet those, meet those benchmarks and obtain that certification.
Commissioner Davis.
Yeah, I just thought there might be folks here that six years would perhaps start thinking for granted that that's, that's why things are. For those folks that might want to take that for granted, I just wanted to mention that there was 25 years before that where those inspections were miserably failed every time.
Right, even in the first year that the jail was in existence, we did not make 100% compliance.
I'm aware of that.
And we tweaked a few things and got some stuff on the right track. And since that time, we've hit it every year. So this year, sometimes you'll, you'll, they'll find a deficiency, say, if they look at, they'll ask about a, say, for example, food service record. Pull that specific record and provide it at the time of the inspection. It's found to be noncompliant, even though you may have it somewhere, but you didn't have it ready at the time at their request. So you can correct that and then they will then come back and say, yeah, you're 100% compliant. But this time, everything that they asked for in the inspection point was met at, at their request. And it was the best inspection that we've had to date.
I just, you know, you're setting a new bar, right? With so many successive years of getting that 100%. And, you know, I know that our history isn't great, but I know that under your leadership, we've achieved this new level. So congratulations. I know, you know, like a quarterback, right? When, when there's a win, the team did it. And then there's a loss, the quarterback takes the hit, right?
That's right, that's how it works.
So congratulations to you and your team.
Congratulations, Sheriff. And please pass our congratulations on to your staff and those who actually achieved all this.
We'll do that.
Now I'm where I should be. Public comment, so the patient sets aside this time for public comment. Please approach the podiums, give your name and address if you will. And it's limited to three minutes. Anyone? Morgan?
Cherry Climer, 3464 South Bank Road, Waltham Township. I noticed in your correspondence that you have Resolution 33-2023 from Walnut Township. It was given to the commissioners in the past few days. This is concerning solar and asking for Walnut. For the large solar and wind. And I think it's important because Walnut Township is speaking, the people of Walnut Township are speaking. Majority of Walnut Township does not want large scale solar taking up the firm land, which also is taking up land that in the land use plan is, you know, for development and that type of thing, if it's done correctly. So I'm asking to please, I don't know if you're gonna address it today other than correspondence from the township, but I'm asking you to please do the will of the people and pass a resolution making Walnut Township an exclusionary zone for large scale solar.
Thank you. Anyone else? Good, well, thank you all for coming. Anything on Lake Woody?
Um, nothing specifically, but I just wanted to message you to the updated, the newly enacted chapter regarding recreational marijuana will go into effect Thursday. I believe the General Assembly is proposing some provisions to that. We continue to monitor, monitor that from a deployment perspective for all of the county and townships, but other than that, I don't.
Good, thank you. Okay, County Administration update, Ani.
Thank you, Commissioner. ARP update, we did receive some new information from the Treasury. Do you want to share that, Jeff?
Sure. As we continue to roll towards December 31st of 2024, which is the, the deadline for obligating the funds in the ARP and making sure those expenditures occur before the end of December of 2026, the federal government continues to tweak the rules related to what is considered an obligation. I believe that they're trying to make things a bit more flexible. So one of the things that has come out of the new interim final rule is the fact that once an entity such as the commissioners enter into a sub grant award, that is considered an obligation of the ARP funds. So most of our large projects right now, we've already entered into sub grant awards. There's also continued flexibility related to administrative costs for administering the ARP funds, which will be able to continue through the end of '26. So stay tuned. I believe we're gonna have continued tweaks and changes as we go along in reaching the ultimate goal of making sure that all of those funds are expended and utilized.
It sounds like it makes it a whole lot easier.
And we're hoping. Well, it's not.
Thank you, Jeff. As Commissioner Levy mentioned, we do have the JFS Leadership Program Participants here. There is a program set up at Job and Family Services that allows folks to get some additional leadership training. The first year is some actual attending classes. I think there's four of them, correct, Heather? And then the second year is more of a participatory. And so visiting commissioners meeting is one of those. So thank you all for joining us today. And we will be hopefully passing the budget here during the meeting. So that's the one we typically invite y'all to. But if you have any questions afterwards, feel free to, to get myself or any of the commissioners here. Happy to have you all here today. Last meeting of the year will be next December 12th, anticipating. Could be some things that would make us veer from that scheduled date, but that is what the plan is right now. The reorganization meeting and first meeting of 2024, January 8th at 9:00 is the reorg meeting. And then January 9th at 9:00 will be the regular meeting. We will be looking to for 2025's reorganizational meeting. Potentially hold that during the last meeting of '24. There's been some change that would allow you all to do that, to reorg at the very end of the year in preparation for that new year. Delaware County is currently utilizing that model. So we were a little too late to make that adjustment for this year. So we'll look forward to that for next year.
Just to back it on schedule right now, I scheduled to go back in town about midnight on the 7th. That could change, so. If it can't change because of y'all's schedule, that meeting on the 12th, I just need to know that. I can definitely keep the arrangements I have. But there are things that might cause me to wanna extend that trip a little bit. So guys, just keep me posted. But right now, I'm good shape.
All right, highlights of resolutions. Review packet does contain a list of administrative approvals. There are 45 resolutions on the agenda for the voting meeting today. And Rochelle is communicating out back to the departments, making sure they are adhering to these end of the year deadlines. We did have a number of resolutions come in, not really under the wire, past the wire. So want to make sure we're getting all that business taken care of in a timely manner, but do need folks submitting that in time. So you'll probably see a higher number of resolutions next week as well. A couple that I will point out, there's a resolution to approve the 2024 appropriation budget. And I think Bart will chat a little bit about that in his budget update here in a few minutes. And we do have four resolutions to appoint board members for the Adam H. Board. There are two unexpired terms right now that Tracy Freeman and Cindy Little, you could choose to appoint them to those. And then come July 1 of '24, there are two more vacancies that will exist. And those are firm individuals that will have completed their terms, but they have completed all of the term that they could complete. So looking forward prospectively there, last week's meeting, four outstanding candidates, very moving, all wanting to be engaged. So taking this opportunity to go ahead and onboard them all at one time. Marcy is offering them the opportunity to begin participating in board meetings, although they would not have a vote, but that would certainly help engage them and get them onboarded sooner rather than later. We do have two resolutions from the Auditor's Office that are rescinding duplicate resolutions from last meeting. A resolution approving the petition to establish the Violet Township New Community Authority. A resolution authorizing the county engineer to remove a right of way obstruction from 305 Canal Road in Baltimore. A resolution to reduce the speed on Lake Road from 55 to 45. An engineering traffic investigation confirmed that the statutory speed limit of 55 was unrealistic and should be lowered. Jason, do you want to speak to those last two?
Yeah, the, the speed limit, that section would be from State Route 22 to Berry Road on Lake. Just that was done through a signature, a petition of signatures from the local residents that requested that study. That's one of the ways that we do that. So a couple of ways the commissioners could request that or the engineers office could request that, township trustees could request that. But in this case, it was a petition from the local residents. Some speed studies, the amount of accesses, the driveways that come in and out of that area. And then just an actual radar check of some speeds through there a couple of different times through the day. We actually saw speeds of around 70 miles an hour through that zone. So if the commissioners approve this, then it would go to ODOT. It actually needs to be approved by ODOT Director before we could actually post that. So that's, the county engineer actually can't lower the speed limit on any of the roads. It has to be done through the commissioners and then through ODOT. So we provide the study, give that information to the commissioners. The commissioners either sign off on that or they don't. And then it goes to ODOT for final approval. If they do, then we would post the speed limits in that area.
Add reduced to 45 or something?
It would be a reduction to 45 from 55 to 45, yeah.
Anything on the obstruction that's being removed?
I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with that.
I can speak to that. That is an extended driveway. I think there's been some verbal communication with the property owner that did not go well, so we are utilizing this whole route. And we will send us a notice today after this resolution is passed. If I can get a copy of the resolution, that would be great, because it's going to property.
Rochelle, make sure he gets that, thank you.
Now, is that the same obstruction that Jeremiah briefed us on a couple of weeks ago?
I don't believe it is. I think this is a different one.
Okay.
Because there's two. This is a different property.
I got it.
And that one of these results, the one that you all passed few weeks.
We have these a lot generally, it doesn't get to this point. So a lot of times we can handle it in-house with letters to the residents and take care of that, but sometimes they escalate a little farther where we need to get Amy involved.
Okay. And then last resolution of note, approving a water line easement in Greedfield Township between Eastland Fairfield Board of Education and the Fairfield County Commissioners. Tony, anything on that one?
This is, the water currently goes to the back of their property. The figure is easement up to come bathroom. They have some expansion going on and we're not in their way. And that helps them in their future development.
Thank you. All right, budget review, Bart?
Yes, just giving you a quick update here. First of all, thanks to everybody, the commissioners, Ani, Jeff, elected official departmental heads and their fiscal staff in preparing the 2024 budget. The chart you see up here right now is showing what our original budget was for 2023 versus how we're budgeting here for 2024. Some highlights here for the revenue right now is coming in 63.9. This is slightly up than the last time we discussed due to we increased sales tax. We had new, new information, so sales tax was increased in the 2024 budget.
So just to be clear, the way you, we're not increasing sales tax. There's more sales tax being generated.
Very good, sir. Yes, yes. More sales taxes being generated, thank you, sir. So and then you see the budget there for, anticipated budget for estimated expenses for 2024 at $62.9 million. That's to the good for the budget for revenue versus expenses by about $925,000. Again, thanks to everybody for all their help and their work in putting this together. And that's all I have for the 2024 budget. There is one highlight that the treasurer provided me today. And I want to give them an opportunity to share some good information about the 2023 investment earnings for this year.
Based upon the earnings we, we earned at Star Ohio in November, looking at that to what we've already booked, so looks like we'll be at 6.5 million.
Commissioner Davis. Well, just inside baseball, I mean, people follow along with these things over the years. There is a material difference in this presentation from the past 10 years, I'd say. No assumption is being made on the utilization rate for the expenses. So historically, when we would make this presentation, there would be a 0.94, 0.95, or 0.96 factor applied to the expense in the budget on the basis that historically 100% of budgets aren't spent four, five, or six percent lower than that. So historically, taking that into account in this presentation, that discount has been alleviated. So if you're following me there, that, that means that this is a very, very, very good situation.
Yeah, I mean, this just shows that we continue to be in the strongest financial position that we've been in as long as I've known about. I didn't know until you've known about. And it's appreciation for the work that you, you know, the foundation that you two laid with Dr. Brown and then the continuing efforts of Jeff and Ani and Bart and Stacy. I wanted to thank Bart and Stacy for the incredible amount of time and effort they put into making this a really strong budget and easy to understand. And that's, we're in good shape.
Dr. Brown, anything like that?
Bart mentioned the increase in the estimate for sales tax. That increase is based upon the latter history of the year. And also, I just felt like it would be best to have sales tax estimate above the current year sales tax estimate.
Calendar review and invitations received, Rochelle.
Today, the OU Joyce and Harold M.D. Nursing Program Celebration is at 5:00 PM at Ohio University Lancaster. The Regional Planning Commission meeting is at 5:30 at the Record Center. And the Millersport Land Use Plan Meeting is at 6:00 PM at the American Legion Hall in Millersport. Tomorrow, December 6th, is the Fairfield 33 Development Alliance Board Meeting at 8:30 AM at the Workforce Center. The County Commissioners Association of Ohio Meeting on Transit is at 1:00 PM at the Hilton Columbus Downtown. And the Stoutsville Land Use Plan Meeting is at 7:00 PM at the Clear Creek Fire Department. The Fairfield County Economic Update is December 7th at 8:30 AM at the Workforce Center. The MCJDC Holiday Happenings Open House is December 7th at 10:30, at, at 10:30 AM at MCJDC. The Airport Authority Board Meeting is December 11th at 5:00 PM at the Fairfield County Airport Terminal. The Lancaster Fairfield Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors Meeting is December 12th at 9:00 AM at the Record Center. And we have a save the date for the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission's 2024 State of the Region, which is on March 15th from 11 to 1:00 PM at the Hilton Downtown Columbus. We received correspondence from the following, an email from a resident thanking Commissioner Fix for his work on the land use plan. A news release from the Office of the County Auditor titled Fairfield County Auditor Announces Dog License Information in Virtual Dog Show. A memo from Dr. Carrie Brown dated November 29th. Subjects Hotel Motel Lodging Tax Distributions, Oprah Stakeholder Meeting and Food Pantry Recommendations for the Attorney General. We also received the wins of the week from Dr. Carrie Brown. We received the Ohio Department of Rehabilitation and Correction regarding the 2023 Annual Jail Inspection that Sheriff Lapes spoke about earlier. The Groundfield Township Resolution Number 2023, 112903, and the Walnut Township Resolution Number 33-2023. A news release from Visit Fairfield County, Ohio, titled Visit Fairfield County's Holiday Trails Return for 2023. The Fairfield County Park District sent their events flyer for fall and winter of 2023. And we received the Honors Ledger News from the County Honors Office for November.
Thank you, Rochelle.
Thank you for targeting any contingency. Cool business.
Just last Tuesday was a really long, cold day, but at the end of the day, we had a really cool commission meeting. I just wanted to thank Commissioner Davis for the way he managed that meeting. I've gotten a number of compliments about how powerful and moving that meeting was, so I just wanted to pass that along. This week, we're finalizing our tour to all the, all the townships and all the villages around the county to talk about our land use plan. We've got Millersport tonight, Stoutsville tomorrow. And the only one left on the list is Madison Township, who doesn't seem very interested in land use plan because really they've got nothing but farms and that seems like that's what they want. I'm gonna show up at one of their meetings because they won't really return calls or emails. So I'm just gonna show up myself, not gonna take, drag the whole crew down there, but, and just talk through what we're doing and why we're doing it so they're aware of it. So we're accomplishing our goal of visiting everyone before the end of the year. And I just wanted to thank the team that's been spending all the time on all these nights going around and hearing me say the same thing 25 different times. So we're making progress. We got a couple of calls last week from townships who initially were very resistant to doing anything, just want to stay the way they are. They're now saying, you know what? We think we need to do this plan. And so we're gonna create a plan and we'd like your help. And that, to me, is why we started down this path, to get the townships and the villages to do this kind of work. And so it's been a long slog, but we're starting to get the results that we were looking for. So again, I'm deeply appreciative of the team that's been going out.
So, you know, and I've said this before, I appreciate all the extra effort Commissioner Fix has put into this land use plan as well as the team because it's a joint effort. And, and you know, it's kind of over and above. I mean, so again, I appreciate everything you've done. Commissioner Davis, you've been on business.
Just wanted to touch on that meeting last Tuesday. I appreciate Commissioner Fix's kind words. I know a number of people here were at that meeting. It wasn't about the way it was managed. The four candidates for the Adam Board are what made that meeting the most powerful meeting that I've ever been in as a commissioner. When the first one started explaining why she wanted to serve, she told her story and she told it with passion in a way that perhaps no candidate for any position we've ever appointed has done before. And that just seemed to raise the bar for the next, the next, and the next candidate. And all of poured her heart out about why they wanted to try to help in this community fight the addictions of alcohol and drugs and help people with their mental health issues. And I, I don't necessarily want it on my record, but I ran a three hour meeting. But man, I'm glad that one was three hours. Thank you.
And likewise, you know, it was, it was a cold day. We, we went to all these viewings and and Jeremiah, he, he was there to conclude it. Somebody went there, but regardless. It was, it was really good, but especially part where we had these four fine individuals who's willing to serve on the Adam Board. fine individuals who's willing to serve on the Adam Board because the Adam Board hasn't been all it could be, but it's all about uh, the leadership of the Adam Board. And we're, we're starting to see the fruits of that with some awfully good people involved in that because the folks they serve is paramount to making Fairfield County a much better place. So I, I really appreciate those who were willing to step up. Fortunately, we were able to have four spots, two right now, two in July 1st, I believe, to actually be able to utilize all these folks' uh, willingness to serve. So, thank you. Make sure David said anything on new business. Commissioner Fix?
I'll be attending the uh, County Commissioners Association of Ohio Winter Conference uh, through the week, this week, and uh, look forward to uh, hearing some productive conversations about topics that are important to counties and bringing some of that back here.
Thank you.
I did also, sorry, I forgot to mention business. Uh, have a chance to attend the Economic Development 411 last week. Rick Zabrack was one of the uh, presenters um, and did a as usual, uh, a great job of uh, representing Fairfield County. Um, you know, there's so many things that are happening around central Ohio. Um, Lieutenant Governor came in and and made a presentation at the end, and it was kind of cool because you know, he was saying some of the same things about density and the need for housing and you know, all the stuff that we're preaching all around the county was uh, pretty much what he was saying in his speech. In fact, at one point, I turned to Rich and Rick and said uh, some version of that guy just stole my speech. So anyway, um, we're on the right path, and and uh, Rick's done a great job of uh, representing us to Mode and to um, you know, One Columbus, and so it's important to recognize that, too.
One of the sessions and presentations on housing uh, just brought up how many villages and townships that we uh, we visited, being 25, and one of the people on the panel looked at Commissioner Fix and said, you've got a kid in me. He's like, 25? Wow. So, thank you.
Well, you know, on the economic uh, front, not all news is good news. And so this week, we received the notice that Post is going to close their plant here in Lancaster. And that will happen until next September, I believe. Is that correct?
Yes, it's conversation with their union said this morning about how we can assist on the Ohio's jobs.
Yeah, and and I think that's important because the folks there are JFS and being able to assist those those folks, maybe maybe have the opportunity some retraining in the future, so.
Manager later today, and actually, after that event, that U B 411, we got notice of this, I was looking for on this, and uh, they've already started uh, some contacts and discussions with people that could possibly be interested, so.
Yeah, and I, I know Rick in the future will make it all happen. Total confidence. So I'd like to start back uh, with uh, Sheriff, uh, anything additional you'd like to add today, anything going on that we need to be aware of? Uh, really, just normal business for us, wrapping up our continuing professional training for the year and um, satisfied through the uh, the Peace Officers Training Council and they have a new system that we're using for that, so it's a little bit more uh, challenging, I guess, to upload that information into that new system, but other than that, uh, carrying on, taking care of business. And I really look forward to that happening, too. The what? I'm sorry? The new system, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Um, good morning. Uh, this coming Friday, Michael Caper and Belinda Nibergal and myself will be attending the quarterly land bank meeting up in Mansfield, Ohio, and uh, see what's going on with other land banks. Also, it'll be some discussion there from the uh, state. Also, uh, last Tuesday, uh, I was kind of flipping the coin whether I wanted to stay home or go down to uh, Burnt down to the fire station, and boy, I'm sure glad I did. It's by far one of the most powerful meetings I've attended in a long time. Thank you.
Others feel the same way, right?
Good morning. Um, so tomorrow, um, my office is hosting um, with our vendor Fiddler, our Southern Ohio User Group Meeting here in the hearing room. We expected to have 20 to 25 folks attending from central Ohio. And um, also, I just wanted to say that the snowman competition that is going on throughout the courthouse has really uplifted a lot of the employee spirits. And I think it's really great to see them all getting together to challenge each other, but do it in fun and the spirit of the holiday, so.
Thank you for coming out last Tuesday. I know those are not fun days to just trawl through all those different sites and all that stuff. So Jeremiah sends his thanks for that. He's, he's been under the weather this week and just asked me to step in this point, but I, I know that they appreciate, he appreciates that. Along Lisa's lines, December 22nd, we're gonna have our Christmas breakfast down there at the shop, and we would welcome all of you to come down for that. We'll have a ugly Christmas sweater uh, contest, some prizes, so if you want to wear your ugliest Christmas sweater.
Steve, that just means sweater for you.
Yeah, that's we could probably do sweatshirts, too. Uh, so we just wanted to welcome you to that, but uh, yeah. Thanks for, thanks for being there last Tuesday. Commissioner Fix, I'll probably see you tonight.
Thank you.
My employee Bev Hoskinson attended the meeting on Tuesday and mentioned the same thing, that she thought it was very moving. It was also the very first meeting that Amanda attended, and she said, wow, for a first one to attend, that was encouraging for her to understand a little bit more about government at the local level as opposed to the state level. I say congratulations to the sheriff for the tremendous results with the jail review, and I know how difficult that is. It takes a great deal of attention to detail, and we should never underestimate the kind of work that goes into about a hundred percent evaluation. Recently had two different meetings for an economic development program relating to Jeds for Violet Township, Canal Winchester, and the city of Lancaster. And during those reorgans national meetings, there was some comment about how there's some pending legislation that will allow for some virtual meetings, so we'll keep our eye on that in case that affords opportunity for other entities as well. Um, I've notified all the payroll, um, individuals relating to the conclusion of voluntary residency municipal income taxes, so everybody has that information. And then in January, and we will begin the mandatory municipal income tax for multiple locations if one works in multiple locations or a telework agreement. So that is working well, and we've got all the communications out, but if any of you hear of any um, questions about that, we're available to help with that. On the agenda today, there's also a resolution that's a one-time correction for a title department error. And I just wanted to point that out because you are approving um, the correction of that particular error. It is conveyance fees that were paid that were not due. We did call the title company to see if their eight-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand-dollar sale was exactly to be correct, and it um, was told to us that it was correct, but then a week later, no, we meant that to be eighty-three thousand. And so there's a stack of corrections like this attached to that resolution, but it is the right thing to do. I just wanted to point it out. Um, thanks to Josh Harper for the good work he did to um, create that process, the documentation, and then the resolution is the the final aspect of that.
I can't imagine how complicated it might be to do income tax when you have multiple locations for one individual.
Um, there probably are maybe twenty or thirty percent of the staff that has that particular circumstance, and we have coding that'll work that out, and most people have also set a particular time. In other words, I'll work three days in this location and two days in the other city, and so it's a more of a pattern. There's a standard pattern that managers have approved. So I don't suspect that there'll be too many issues about it. We, we've done a lot of work ahead of time to make sure people understand what will be happening. We want to point out the hotel motel lodging revenue distributions for 23. Um, VCB received three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty-six, that's twelve percent increase over the prior calendar year, and Daco received two-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand-six-hundred-and-forty-five, that's seven percent increase over the prior year. And if you're curious, about twelve to seventeen percent of the collections are from short-term rentals. So there is um, you know, a sizable amount that relates to short-term rentals as opposed to more traditional um, hotel motel. The map of the month this month is the Christmas Traditions Around the World, and you can vote for your favorite map of the year. Right now, the solar map is is Edging Out Zane's Trace, um, but we'll see what the map of the year happens to be. Just wanted to also point out the Oprah Stakeholder Meeting, um, because the Oprah's has been given authority to pursue an increase for the employer share from the fourteen percent to eighteen percent, but during the stakeholder meeting, they committed to having a incremental increases, so it wouldn't go immediately from fourteen to eighteen, but have incremental increases over time if that is approved by the legislature, which is helpful um, to all of us. There's a meeting on December 7th, and I'm just mentioning that meeting on December 7th relating to a potential correction that will be a resolution on December 12th relating to grant accounting.
Thank you. Any, anything you'd like to uh, mention today?
Rick, I'm sure you have something to say. So if, if you would, please, rise if you're able, and join me in.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rochelle, any announcements?
I do have one announcement. We have a correction on the regular agenda. Resolution 2023-12.O5.CC should actually be under Fairfield County Job and Family Services, not Family and Children's Health Council. I will also pull that in when we get to that section.
Right, so approval minutes for November 28, 2023. Discussion. Seeing the unroll call, please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Minutes passed three zero from the Commissioners, Resolution 2023-12.O5.A, a resolution approving the 2024 annual appropriation measure, the county budget.
Under Commissioners, I move items A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, and I.
Discussion.
I want to thank everybody, uh, Bart and Stacy, and County Auditor, and all the other elected officials that were involved in that presentation for the preparation of the 2024 um, budget. We've been on a long um, pattern for a number of years now, of being in good financial shape. It's the lowest sales tax rate in central Ohio. I've mentioned before, and I, I think it remains true, therefore, as far as we can reasonably forecast, uh, that appears to be the case. I do have concerns in the time period beyond our ability to forecast, and I know that my colleagues and I all the folks that work with us in the Commissioners' Office are aware of that concern, and we are addressing it.
Make sure Fix anything.
Uh, yeah, I said earlier, um, the, the way the budget was done, and the effort that was put into it were really top-notch, so we're in great shape. I appreciate all the work that everybody does, makes, make sure that happens, and it stays that way.
Well, you know, myself, as well as uh, Commissioner Davis, we in the early years, we struggled quite a bit to make uh, make the balance, but the, the, the budget balance, if you will. And it was, it was a struggle, you know, in a lot of cases. And um, you know, today, things are going very well, but I think it has a lot to do with how we've been physically responsible over the years, and then I think some of the fruits we're now seeing have, have a lot to do with that. But uh, again, it's, it's a team effort. It's not it's not just the Commission, but everybody here in the room that's been helped, helped with that regard. So I appreciate every, each and every one of you and all the hard work you uh, put into this, making that happen. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From the Fairfield County Auditor Finance Division, Resolution 2023-12.5.J, a resolution to approve to rescind Resolution 2023-11.28.Q, duplicate resolution appropriate from unappropriated fund 2072.
Fairfield County Auditor, I move items J, K, and L.
Justice Department, and then the one correction with the title company is within this group, too.
Any additional discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero from the Fairfield County Clerk of Courts Legal Division, Resolution 2023-12.5.N, resolution approving an account-to-account transfer in a major object expense category, Fund 1001.
So moved.
Second, discussion. Seeing the unroll call, please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero from the Fairfield County Court of Common Pleas, Resolution 2023-12.5.N, resolution authorizing the approval to extend the repayment date of an advance, Fund 2869, Adult-Based Corrections.
Fairfield County Court of Common Pleas, I move items N, O, and P.
Second, discussion. Seeing the unroll call, please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. The Fairfield County Dog Shelter, Resolution 2023-12.P.Q. dot five dot Q, excuse me, a resolution to appropriate for unappropriated in a major expenditure object category, Fund 2002.
Senate. Second, discussion. Seeing the unroll call, please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From the Fairfield County Economic and Workforce Development, Resolution 2023-12.5.R, a resolution approving the petition for establishment of the Violet Township New Community Authority under Ohio Revised Code 349.
Our Fairfield County Economic Workforce Development, I move our items R, S, T, U, and V.
Second, discussion.
This is the first new community authority, and I mean uh, the Commissioners, this is just a subdivision on Torquay Road. This will help to uh, basically all the stuff we've been talking about at these meetings, which is be able to come up with some ways for the residents and the users of the properties to uh, provide the taxes for tools and things else that's this one checked off.
Additional discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry, one more thing. There will be a public hearing that will need to be made in January.
Okay. Very good. Additional discussion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From the Fairfield County Engineer, Resolution 2023-12.5.W, a resolution authorizing the Fairfield County Engineer the authority to remove obstructions or interference from 305 Canal Road, Baltimore, Ohio.
Fairfield County Engineer, I move items W, X, Y, Z, A, A, and B, B.
Second, discussion. Seeing the unroll call, please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From Fairfield County Job and Family Services, Resolution 2023-12.5.CC, a resolution to approve additional appropriations by appropriating from unappropriated into a major expense object category, Fund 2018 Public Assistance Fund.
So moved.
Second, discussion. Seeing the unroll call, please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Also, from Fairfield County Job and Family Services, Resolution 2023- Also from Fairfield County Job and Family Services, Resolution 2023-12.5.d.d. A resolution to approve a memo receipt and expenditure for Fairfield County Job and Family Services, Fund Number 372, reimbursing Fund Number 2018.
Fairfield County, um, Family Services, I move items D, D, E, E, F, F, G, G, and H, H.
Second, discussion. Seeing none, roll call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes 3:0. From Fairfield County Juvenile Probate Court, Resolution 2023-12.5.i.i. A resolution authorizing the approval of a contract file between the Fairfield County Probate Court Guardianship Services Board and Fairfield Medical Center.
Fairfield County Juvenile Probate Court, I move items I, I, J, J, K, K, and L, L.
Second, discussion. Roll call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes 3:0. From Fairfield County Regional Planning Commission, Resolution 2023-12.5.m.m. A resolution to approve final acceptance of the Huron Crossing Section 2 subdivision.
So moved.
Second, discussion.
I think you have anything to archetypal release of the maintenance. Thank you.
Additional discussion. Roll call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes 3:0. From Fairfield County Sheriff, Resolution 2023-12.5.n.n. A resolution approving an account-to-account transfer into a major expenditure object category, Fund 1001.
So moved.
Second, discussion. Seeing none, roll call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes 3:0. From Fairfield County Utilities Department, Resolution 2023-12.5.o.o. A resolution to approve a reimbursement for sheriff costs for liability insurance paid to Corsa as a memo expenditure funds 5044 and 5046.
Fairfield County Utilities, I move items O, O, and P, P.
Second, discussion. Roll call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes 3:0. From the Lancaster Fairfield Community Action Agency, Resolution 2023-12.5.q. A resolution authorizing the Subordination FY2004 Community Housing Improvement Program for Alicia Stack.
So moved.
Second, discussion. Seeing none, roll call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes 3:0. From South Central Major Crimes Unit, Resolution 2023-12.5.r.r. A resolution approving an account-to-account transfer into a major expenditure object category, Fund 2503, please revolve.
So moved.
Second, discussion. Roll call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes 3:0. On payment bills, Resolution 2023-12.5.s.s. A resolution authorizing the approval of payment of invoices for departments that need board commissioners' approval.
So moved.
Second, discussion. Roll call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes 3:0. The next regular meeting scheduled for December 12th and 9:00 a.m.
The next week, uh, December 12th will be our final meeting for the year, but as, as it's always been the, the case, if there's a need for an additional meeting, if something comes up, we'll certainly make that happen. Commissioner Davis, anything?
I did forget to mention, uh, earlier during new business, I'm, uh, fortunate enough to be able to deliver some remarks, uh, tomorrow at 1 o'clock to the County Commissioners Association of Ohio. Um, I'll be, um, kind of describing, uh, the research and analysis that, um, we have been undertaking here regarding, um, acute and chronic transportation impediments in our community, some of the ways that we hope to try to address those in the future. And then also, um, I did, uh, receive a message this week from Dana Moore at the Monty County Juvenile Detention Center, who was hoping that someone or all of us would be able to, uh, come to their holiday open house on the 7th at 10:30. At the point I got her message, none of us had responded to that, but it made. And so I'm doing it.
I would love to do that with you, but unfortunately I get the CCA Winter Conference.
You wouldn't love.
Same. Anytime I get to spend with you, Steve, it's time that I cherish.
Everybody says it.
Well, I would, I would love to be out there with you, but I'm unable to do that. And you know I would if I could, but I can't. Well, thanks for doing it. And you know, Commissioner Davis just mentioned this, uh, you know, I, I think, uh, Fairfield County is recognized throughout the state as being one of the innovative leaders in many different areas. And I think this is one of them. And, uh, between the work of Commissioner Fix and Commissioner Davis, you know, I'm proud to be here. I'm, I'm just, I'm I'm here for the ride because these guys come up with all the great ideas. So, thank you guys for everything you do. Any additional item to come before the Board of Commissioners at this time? Please.
If I could, I'd like to recognize, uh, Ms. Palmer, uh, who may have a question.
Yes. Um, at this point, since December 12th is the last regular meeting, what happens to the two townships, uh, resolutions concerning?
Those have been taken under advisement.
I mean, what, what, like, what next steps then? I know that the Commissioners can come up with a resolution that actually codifies or ratifies or something.
Yeah, and I, I would just.
Other counties have done the same.
I understand. And, and those are, it's resolutions are under advisement. The Commission has not made a decision as to how to proceed with those suggestions. Thank you. Take this president.
Any additional item before the Board?
Question to adjourn.
Second. On favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are, we are adjourned.
I had arranged the, yeah. Three minutes.